It is okay. Do I need it?
No.
I call to order this work session meeting of the Oberlin City School Board of Education. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gadsden?
Here.
Ms. Stagel?
Here.
Ms. Ameca?
Here. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any, there, there's no changes or discussion, so please call the roll.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Yes. Dr. Hall?
Okay, tonight, we have our teachers and our administrative staff here to provide a presentation on, and updates on academics for the district. And I'm gonna turn it over to our curriculum director. This is Misha Baker.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Alrighty, the radio voice came out. So, good afternoon. Today, we are going to give a little glimpse into academics. We'll give some glimpse, and if you have questions, ask the questions. And at a later date, if we need to present something different, you know, we'll, we'll play with that. We originally had almost 65 slides for you. And then, we recognized that people probably wanna go home tonight. Just, just maybe a little bit, just a little bit. So, here we go. Possibly? Oh, there we go. Today, we're gonna talk a little bit about growth versus proficiency in reference to our assessment data. We're gonna talk, our, our teams of teachers and coaches are gonna talk about TBTs and BOTs and how they work with data in their buildings. We're gonna have Ms. Sheila Felix talk about MTSS, special education. And then, there're gonna be some conversations about some of the programs that we have in the district, mostly at the high school. And then, if time permits, we'll talk about grading policies, which is probably about a three-minute conversation. So, that is the plan. First and foremost, when we talk about growth and proficiency, a lot of people don't understand with our assessments. Our assessments give, depending on the assessment, one may measure growth, one may measure proficiency, and some can measure all of the above at different times. Example, I Ready is an assessment that we have kindergarten through eighth grade, and it predominantly works with growth. How much, you know, when we look at academically, are our students growing? As a district, your goal is always, you know, to have at least a minimum of one year's growth. And so, that's what we use that information to say, hey, are we making our typical growth or not? It is able to give us some predictions, however, it's based on I Ready's data. When we look at the state assessment, it's mostly about proficiency. Did you make the standard? We are able to get a little bit of information on growth, and I shouldn't say a little bit, a lot of information on growth, but that typically happens, they give us those reports in October. So, by that time, we've already started the school year, and we're able to use our, our I Ready growth data. Doesn't mean we don't use the state information, we do, and you'll hear that conversation today. But just to keep in mind, there's a difference between growth and proficiency, and although each assessment will give you a tiny bit of glimpse into both, there are some that are more, our I Ready is more so growth, and the state is more so proficiency because of that standard. Who am I, why am I here? Click. Our board members, you have the information in front of you, just because we weren't sure if we were going to have the internet access. So, you know, bear with us, if you can't see the numbers, you should have that in front of you, you could be able to see them. So, when we look at I Ready, I Ready's an assessment that we give from kindergarten to eighth grade. I Ready is one of the approved vendor assessments from the state of Ohio. The state of Ohio has a list of assessments that you have to give as a diagnostic for your kinder through third grade. And once we realized that we are able to track our students' growth from kinder to eighth grade, it was a positive for us. So, when we look at the I Ready, ELA K through eight, the blue line, bear with me, I think I'm gonna dance a little bit with the microphone. And I know the camera kinda wants to follow me a little bit. So, when we're looking at the blue line here, progress to annual typical growth, we're literally talking about what does typical growth look like? And how many of our students are making typical growth? So, there's about 86% median typical growth. Then, we look at current placement distribution, and this is, you know, I think it's important to really be able to break down and understand this particular chart. When our started, when our students in K through eight ELA began the school year, and they took the I Ready assessment, 17% of our students were three or more grade levels below. It's important to know, we're talking K through eight, 17%. When they took it again mid-year, it had moved to 11% were three or, three grade levels below. We were able to move 6% of those students. Same thing here with the solid red, that represents 12% of our students who are two grade levels below. That has moved to 8%. When we look at one grade level or below, which is our yellow, 33% of our students at the beginning of the school year were one grade level below. Now, it's 26% mid-year, yes.
Is that grade level at where they should be at the beginning of the year, or that's grade level where they should be at the end of that school year?
End.
End, thank you.
Early on grade level, solid green, 17% at the beginning of the school year, mid-20, and then, mid or above grade level, 21%, and has now moved to 35%. So, obviously, the goal is to see that grow. But if you, you know, you recognize, if we, we have that, that is the gamut of what we have, up to three grade levels or more below, all the way up to above grade level, we're talking academically. And then, at the bottom, what you'll see is broken down by building Langston and Middle, Langston and Oberlin Elementary School. And once again, it's talking about annual typical growth. You go, well, hey, what's going on with 134? What it's saying is, with the median, there are, 54% of the students made their typical growth. But with that 54%, some of them made more than their typical growth, and that's why you will see that it's over 100. 39% elementary school have met their typical growth for the year, and that's pretty good. So, then, we talk about stretch growth. Stretch growth is that growth where you say, hey, you've made typical, but we want you to stretch, right? We want you to go beyond what that standard says you can. For some students, that stretch growth may be to try to catch up. For some of them, it may be moving them to advanced or enriched, right? Questions there?
What do those percentages represent then?
Here?
Forty-six and a fifty.
Students with improved placement, so 49% of the students.
For the annual stretch growth?
The annual stretch growth? Forty-six percent, same thing, 46% of the, there was 40% stretch. So, 24% of the students met their stretch growth, and they've stretched about 46%. So, some of them have gone beyond their stretch, whereas some of them probably just barely met a stretch percentage. And then, 49% of the students improved placement, and 58% of the students improved placement midway through the year. So, that's ELA. And then, then we have math, same information. And you will see that with math, very similar information. I'll allow you to take a moment to take a look at that. Good? Okay. And, you know, I'm sure you probably have a little bit more questions. We, you know, this training, to understand some of these reports, we're in these trainings for sometimes two days to get every aspect of it. It's a lot, it's a lot. So, here, I Ready will also give us a projection. It'll say, hey, even though we're I Ready, thank you for sharing your state standards with us. And we're gonna say to you, based on your state standards, this is what we project will happen to your students when they take your state test. And when we took a look at the three through eight for ELA, they said, if your students, you know, don't have any extra growth, this is just basic right now, no additional growth, 56% of them will be proficient on your state test for ELA. If they meet, if they all meet their typical growth, 64% of them will be proficient with no stretch. And if you see, we've already had students making stretch. And then, if all the students make and achieve their stretch growth, we're looking at about 72% being proficient. And then, the same thing happens with math. We're looking at 47 with no additional anything happening. And then, typical growth, if they meet it, 59%. And then, if we stretch them, 66. And you'll go, 66? And that's part of the conversation we're having today, because at the beginning of the year, we identified, when we look at last year's test results, that our math is in dire need of intervention and support. Speaking of which, so, when we look at I Ready, we've talked about, there's growth. The top half of this chart is about growth, beginning of the year till mid-year. This is by grade level for Langston. And then, that same projection information just for Langston, so that you can see where it's projected for ELA, 62, 60, 66. Doesn't mean that that is what exactly gonna happen, it could. Or it could be higher, depending on the stretch growth. But that's saying that that should be kind of like your minimum, what you should see. Same thing for six through eight math. Growth comparison, beginning of the year to mid-year. And then, your typical growth, and what it would look like for a proficiency projection.
Hey, Misha?
Yes.
For seventh and eighth, I know some of our seventh graders take Algebra I, and some of our eighth graders take geometry, so is that?
They're in here.
And so, I Ready does, will test them? I thought it only went up to eighth grade math, it didn't go beyond that for?
Well, it will test them, they'll have a couple of questions, it's not gonna be all eighth, all geometry and whatever else. I know that's people's concern. Why am I taking it? Why do I have to take I Ready? I don't want to, it's not gonna give me that. But we'll be able to still see that growth. It'll still give us a number that kinda says, hey, they're gonna need some additional enrichment. So, it does, it, it's not gonna give every algebra, every geometry strand in there, it's not going to give it all. It won't. So, the prediction will be a little while from there, yeah. Did you all wanna add anything to that? No? Okay. Alrighty. And then, I Ready math for grades three through five, very similar, beginning, middle of the year, grade level placement in terms of growth, and then, proficiency projections. And once again, if you look at math, you go, oh my goodness. We say the same thing, we know that that's what we've been working on this school year. And you go, well, I don't know that you have, well, yeah, you can see that there's progression happening. And if you remember, from the beginning of the year, how many students we had, three or more, or two or more grade levels behind. So, it's a lot of work, and as we show you, you'll see that, you know, we are Oberlin, and we wanna be different, and we wanna have more growth than anyone else, and we wanna make sure that we're supporting our students. But we're having a nationwide problem with math, we're having a state problem with math, and we're trying to figure out how to overcome all of that. And it's just, you know, it's, it's a big project. Come on. So, once again, six through eight, ELA. You're gonna hear like they're going a little backwards, but, yeah.
I know if you heard a lot about math, that's one of our focus areas, we talked to the board about as well, and eventually, you're having the principals getting up there to try to provide some different support systems that we're providing for our students in those areas.
Yeah, so, they're gonna give you a little bit more glimpse into what's happening at their building with that, with the data. So, when we talk about it, when it was brought to me, it was, let's talk a little bit about I Ready versus the state, and if there is a correlation, are there correlations? So, when we look at the third through fifth projection, I can look, and I can see, I'm gonna ignore third grade for a reason. I Ready can give us third grade projections based on the students taking I Ready kinder first and second. However, the state, this is the first year they've ever taken the state, so the state does not give you a projection for third graders. So, if you take a look at our fourth grade students with ELA, 49% projected proficiency, fifth grade, 72% projected proficiency, right? 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 Mm-hmm. So, I'm gonna skip over here to fifth grade. When I look at, the state of Ohio has a site that's called Evas. And about October-ish, what happens is, the state of Ohio sends all of our test data to Evas and says, hey, here's all your, all of our test data. And then, that company, company, as Mrs. Hicks told us at the last board meeting, has a special formula that they calculate what growth should look like for each student based on every state assessment that they've taken, no matter what the subject matter. So, they kinda track a pattern of assessment for each child, and that's how they're able to come up with the projections. What happens is, they give us a lot of options to pull the projections. One is looking at the proficiency rate. Then, we can also pull a report that says, these are the students that have a high probability or a low probability of advanced. These are the students who have a high or a low probability of basic. But for today, we're gonna live in proficient, just because otherwise, we'd be here for five days trying to go through every single report. And when I take a look at fifth grade's projections, they're saying, there's a 90% or higher chance that 37% of those students will be proficient. Then, it says between 50% to 90% of those students will be proficient, 22%. So, someone will go, well, I don't see that correlating to 72. In actuality, if I was to select this number, which I'm not gonna do that, 'cause it gives students names, I would see a chart that looks like this and have students' names on it, it's gonna tell me their gender, their race, enrolled grade, it's gonna tell me if their economic disadvantage, EL, gifted, migrant, students with disabilities, and then, it's also gonna give me their percentage of probability. So, when I take a look at fifth grade, they're actually about, I think it's like a 20, wait a minute, how many students? I have to look at that, the exact number. Brain is gone, freezing, I apologize. It'll tell me exactly how many students fell within a certain range. And when I take a look at it, here we go. When I take a look at it for, well, the fifth grade, you'll see that even though it's a 72% projected, while OST is based on third grade, da-da-da-da, I got all that, I apologize. 90%, we talked about that, 15 students, between 50% to 90% of those students who are in here, between 50% to 90%, those 15 students, nine of them are between 70% to 89.5%. So, you know, that's when it gets a little quicker, a little closer, you go, wait a minute, of them, nine of these 15 are between 70% to 89%? So, in reality, I would like to think that that's a lot more closer to 60% than it is to the 30 that you see. And that's how we're able to break it down and to take a look at that information and say, hey, which students fall into this category? And our principals have been trained, and our coaches work with it, to go in there and pull those students out to say, hey, these are the students that are close to proficiency, these are the ones that are not, and they'll use part of this data with all the other data that they work with to determine interventions. I know that was a lot. Okay. Who am I, why am I here? So, then, we go to, and that's how we can look at those projections and see if they correlate. Six through eight, same thing for ELA. I can do the same correlation, look to see where I Ready says that they project, and then, look to see where the state says that they project. And like I said, you know, when you look at these at first, you go, it doesn't correlate, but you've gotta dig deeper into that 50 to 90 to see how many of those students are 70 or higher, or 75 or higher. And then, I'll give you a different glimpse in a minute. And so, same thing for math, and if you want me to actually let you see those a little closer, we can, but, I don't know. And then, we have, you know, why just math, Misha? Because math, as you see, is a, is an issue for us. And so, when we look at the end of course of exams, projections, projections for our current high school students, if we look at our current ninth graders, it's projecting how many that will be proficient in algebra. Now, here's the, the conundrum. We already have 22 students who have already taken that test, and they have already showed 20 proficiency. So, keep that in mind, it would be this information, you know, with, with those who've already taken it in terms of our algebra students who are on track. And so, for geometry.
That 22 is the students who took it when they were in Langston because they took that class there.
Yes. And same thing with geometry. It's a calc, it's a, our number of students who've already taken it. And you look, and you go, oh my goodness, only 3%, 90% chance? And even if you had all of 18 and three, that's not very high. And then, you calculate your 18% in there, it's still concerning. That's the work we have.
And, Misha, geometry is still required for graduation. Is that correct?
You don't have to pass the test, but you have to require, it's the course.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. It's the course. And we saw this at the beginning of the school year, this chart, where we talked about where we needed to spend our time and provide a lot of intervention to our students' support. And it talked a little bit about, when you see the darker bluish gray area, significant evidence that the district exceeded student growth expectations by a large magnitude. So, you know, that would be your ELA mostly for all grades, it would be your seventh and eighth grade and fifth grade ELA, your fifth grade math, your fifth grade science, when we had that, right, your fifth grade science, and then, fifth grade all test. Right, they're working great. And then, American government. When we look at the light blue, significant evidence that the district exceeded student growth expectations. All grades, all tests, they're just taking an average and saying, oh, okay, alrighty. And then, green, light green, evidence that the district met student growth expectations. So, we met them, and that's the light green, and you can, you can see what items are light green. And then, the red, significant evidence that the district fell short of student growth expectations by a large magnitude, and those would be your red. It's your fourth grade math, your seventh grade math, your eighth grade science, and with fourth grade, it's kinda saying, you need to spend some time with fourth grade to figure out what's happening, is our curriculum aligned to instructional practice, what supports that we need to get, give our students and our staff in fourth grade. And then, you know, algebra and geometry, which we've already said are issues. Need a little love. Questions?
Does the seventh grade take into account algebra, or just the students who took the seventh grade?
Just the seventh grade test. Mm-hmm. So, then, when we could talk a little bit about growth and proficiency, when we look at ELA across the district, so this is all of third through 12th grade English Language Arts Test. And when you look at the red line there, the red line represents, that is your standard growth, that is your standard growth. Anything on the left, a little bit less than standard growth, which may be growing, and on the right, there's a lot more. And when you see, you see for the ELA purposes, we have two subgroups of our demographics who we need to look at. Our Hispanic population and our students with disabilities. And then, when you look at, remember, growth means, we were growing everybody, they're growing, we're growing in ELA. But when we look at, are you proficient, even though you're growing? And we notice that we have some populations of students who are proficient. We have more growth than proficiency. So, if you take a look at our, I guess we could take a look still at our students with disabilities, about 50.9% of our students are proficient and show, and have that achievement. And we already know that there's some growth issues, right? So, we know, guess what, we have to spend some time. However, if we take a look at our multiracial students, 80.4, the goal is always 100, right? But 80.4% in terms of achievement, pretty good, right? But look, we're right there with growth. We're making growth, but we can go across that line at any moment, so we need some Firing the clicker. Alright, same thing with math. Shocked, but not shocked. Growth, where's the red line? You don't see it, 'cause it would be way over here. It's just the reality of, you know, this is what we've been saying all year. This is why, when we talk about the math intervention times and the math support that we have to put in there, and trying to get tutors into the buildings and some after-school sessions or whatever, because our students aren't growing in math. It's negative. Even though we have some students who are achieving, achieving, I can be proficient and not grow. And that's one of the big lessons that we're working with, you know, with our staff and our families, is you can be proficient and not have growth. It's not enough to just be proficient. So, this is a little harder to see, 'cause I know we like to talk a little bit about comparison with other districts and other people. And what I did, I can, you know, this chart can compare a multitude of things. But since we're talking about growth and achievement, took a look at fourth grade, the dark, dark, dark purple dot is where our first, fourth grade is in respect to all the districts in Ohio. Same thing with our fifth grade is here in respect to all the districts in Ohio in terms of above that index for growth, and above that 50% for achievement. We take a look at our sixth grade and our seventh grade, same thing, it's the dark purple in reference to all of the districts in Ohio. And then, you can see the same thing for eighth grade, geometry, and algebra. We obviously want to be above the growth index and closer to that 700 for achievement. So, then, well, thank you for sharing that, Baker, but let's talk about that correlation a little bit more. So, we talked about, all the data you've seen, except for the last one with the, with the scatter plots, has been about our students this year, and how we have to move this year. So, when we talk about, is I Ready, you know, why are we giving it, you know, is it correlating with the state test? Let's take a look at last year's. Last year, Langston, and I pulled Langston, just because I think there's a little, you know, their glimpse into it. If I pulled all of the Langston students' ELA prediction, it said to me that there would be 65% of the students who would be proficient on the state test. When you take a look, if you added, actually, it says 64, but they put 65 because of the rounding, so that's why you see that there. But when you take a look at what happened between sixth and seventh, eighth grade ELA last year, it was 65% of the students who were proficient. Strong correlation. Doesn't mean every single year's gonna be perfect and right on the number, no, but it's gonna be very close. So, there is a correlation. Math, you're gonna see a little different. Let's just be obvious about it, right? Let's put it out there. Why is it so different? And it goes back to the question that you asked. Our students who took geometry and algebra will not be in this number. So, whereas for Langston, the prediction was 47%, and it's a lot less for OST, because those students who would be your geometry and algebra students, who, some of them are your honors, some of them are your gifted students, are not calculated into that OST data. Question about that? Okay, that was state test. Ooh, I know, like breathe-a. It's like, whoa. So, then, we talk about ACT a little bit here. ACT, you will see, there's some trend data from 23, 24, all the way to 19, 20, 20, 19, 20, 20, I don't wanna say 19, 20, makes it sound like 19, 20. I know, right? So, 20, 23, 20, 24, school year, all the way down to the 20, 19, 20, 20, school year. There's national numbers, our number of students, we look at the chart, and then, we try to do some, a little bit of trend data and comparison data with national averages, state average, and Oberlin's average, as much as we could. For the subjects, was a little bit more difficult to get some of that state data, because the state of Ohio doesn't, which is interesting, 'cause they always want yours, but they don't necessarily always publish theirs that way. So, you get a chance to see, you know, we are below the national average, but you'll get a chance to see that. And then, broke it down into demographics, so that you can see within our student population, what population of students have the highest scores or are, need a little bit more support.
Misha, these are the seniors who took this at the beginning of?
These, this is ACT last spring, this is last spring's ACT scores. So, this year's have not been 100% released yet, even though when you log in, it might be like a little floater of one kid, but we don't have all of those. So, this is last spring, those students who were, yeah, juniors who are now seniors. And there was a little chart that didn't come up, but that's okay. That's a lot, that's a lot. And there's a little bit more about IB data as we go a little bit further, but I wanna take a break and give this opportunity to the building teams to talk a little bit about, you know, the part of the data that we've talked about, or whatever data they're getting, that they can talk to you about, what happens with their teachers? How do their teachers get this data? How do they have time to analyze it? Who's doing it with them, and what's the goal of that? And we can start with the high school.
Couple things, first, that was awesome, Misha. I think what, how she explained everything was really, really well done. There's so much information that are available, you know, in all the portals, that it's almost impossible to capture it all. And one of the other things I wanna mention before Kristen and I talk a little bit about what we're doing with the data, we not only have that, but there's this item analysis where we have historical data based on how our students have performed or- where we have historical data based on how our students have performed or, and/or our staff in regards to very specific items in the content standards. And so at our TBT and, um, meetings, we, we take the time, especially early on in the year, to look at data over time to see, are we seeing a trend? Do we continue to have students who struggle, or, or maybe not just only students, um, but a staff member who continues to maybe fall below in that item, and then how do we address that item? But Kristin, come on up. I want to talk a little bit about TBTs and kind of how we use the data in our TBT meetings. And Kristin Miller will help us with that.
Yeah, so we have a calendar of data that we go through in our TBT cycle every year. We start out the year with reflection on last year and how things went. And my philosophy this year has been kind of teaching the teachers how to fish. Uh, there is something called the CRS, the Central Reporting System, that teachers can go to and get a lot of this data. So we've been working this year on getting the teachers comfortable with accessing this data and learning how to find it, learning how to go back to it, because in the past, it's been us providing the data to the teachers, which is helpful and which is fine. You know, we put it in a Google Drive and it's a good place for them to find it. But it's even more meaningful when they can go in themselves and do queries in the central reporting system. So we've been working through using that. Uh, there's also something called the Assessment Authoring System that allows teachers to author assessments within the state's portal system that gives them, and of course, questions. So throughout the year, they can also create their own data of how their students are doing through this state assessment system. Uh, we start out the year with, like I said, the data from the past year, and then we also do benchmarks at the beginning of the year that give us data to analyze, to see how kids are doing. The state provides something called checkpoints for us as well. And we set up a schedule for the teachers to do those checkpoints throughout the year, and then we hit that data again with the teachers. The checkpoints are mimicking the end-of-course assessments, but just tiny portions of them broken down by standard. So that allows the teachers to see how their kids are performing on specific standards to see what they need to go back and address. Then, uh, we, oh my gosh, there's so many pieces of data that we go over.
One of the things that I was thinking of as Kristin was talking, at the beginning of the year, the state gives us projections. And we've, we've identified, especially at the high school, that if the state gives a projection that a student is in the sixty-five percent or so range, they're going to make it. Good first instruction gets them there. We've determined that if it's below the sixty-five percent, and sixty-five percent is an-ish, right there in that range, that it's going to take something extra. And I can use this winter's, uh, projections for our government. Everybody who was projected made it, but two. And the two who didn't make it, if you look into those two students, they have a story. And sometime it's that story of hardship that, that happens in the students' households or, or in their families. And so we have found, when we talk about spending time in our TBTs and looking at our projections, the teachers pull in their previous year's scores, lay them next to the projections, and then like if you're Becky LaHetta, the minute she gets the scores from the current year, she lays that side by side too. And then she can actually look at potential trends over time to, to reflect on her own teaching. So a little bit on the projections and how we...
Can you say again what TBT stands for?
Teacher-based teams.
Thanks.
Yep. Um, and, let's see, what else? Oh, so this year, uh, something new that we've done at the high school too, is we've started to incorporate more, uh, focus on the ACT into our TBTs too. So we actually, with all of the teacher-based teams, whether they taught ELA or math or science or history, we analyzed our ACT data and we took a look at the ACT standards and some typical ACT questions so that teachers could help students more with that. So we're hoping that that will pay off in the long run. And especially with our English and math, we really have focused in on analyzing them to kind of give the kids a leg up in that respect too. I'm getting off track here. Uh, so in mid-year, we do another round of benchmarking, which tells us where we are and where we need to go. And in our teacher-based teams, then we do intervention based off of that and what we find from that. And then in March and April, we really make our final push toward the EOCs. So in our teacher-based teams, we're doing a really fine-grained analysis of how our students are doing on those final checkpoints, how they're doing on those final teacher-created assessments that mimic the end-of-course tests. And then in May, we get to see how it all panned out, and then we start the year again.
Teacher-based teams, are they, um, I know, just for the community, also for the board as well, they're built into the teacher's schedule to meet during the time period.
Yes, yes. So we have time built in every week for every department. So at the high school, they get to meet with their department for a period, and then we set the agenda for, you know, what we're going to discuss, what data we're going to discuss that time. Um, it could even be what new methods we've learned about that we want to introduce that teachers have learned about, that they've found success with their class, so they want to share with everybody else in their subject area.
So we have principals and coaches both sometimes involved in the teacher-based teams as well. So teachers, principals, coaches, all of ours, a team effort to go over the data and review it with them.
Yes.
We, uh, we spend a lot of time in trying to build our master schedule so that it allows for that. So there's a lot of, uh, contributing factors to the master schedule, but at the high school, we, obviously, the IB drives the schedule. We make sure every student can get to their DP if they need to. But then the very next thing is making sure we have common planning time for our departments so that we can have these professional conversations. And then one more thing I'll mention, and I don't want to steal from Sheila when she gets up to speak. Um, but in special education, when I first got to the high school, we had as many as fifteen students receiving first instruction in a small group setting with an intervention specialist who was highly qualified. I think we're down to three students now, where we are pushing them out, first instruction with our content experts and our intervention specialists going with them to support them in that setting. And while you may not see it in achievement, if you look at some gap closing and gap closing, it's about all of our subgroups, you'll see growth in regards to gap closing for our subgroups, mostly in our special education, because they are being exposed to those high expectations and that content out in the, in the gen ed setting. So, a little bit of information on that.
Quick question again. So I have to say, these acronyms are getting me stuck and I'm missing the good information that you give after the acronym, because I'm like, well, do I know that one? I've been here for a little while. So what's DP?
Uh, the Diploma Program, the IB Diploma Program.
Thank you.
And I was going to add, our intervention specialists also attend our subject-level teacher-based teams as well. So they get more content area information that way.
You've been doing some very interesting with IB too as well, far as analyzing the test data from there, and I don't know if you want to speak on that too, it's been phenomenal.
Yeah, so...
Oh, or is that later?
Um, I'll talk about it when we hit the IB slide. I think that, if that's okay.
And then I was going to ask about what intervention looks like at the high school, but I don't know if that's also later or if that's, no, that's now.
Sure, so we have, I have a whole sheet of, uh, what intervention looks like. And we're moving toward something new even this year because we have realized that we need to build in additional support as well. So one of our frontline interventions is we have teachers who push into study halls as one of their duties, and they have access to all of this data for the kids who are in the study halls, so they are able to take that time and sit down with the kids and say, Brent, I noticed that we're having some struggles in math here. Can I help you along with that? So that is one of our frontline interventions. We also have specific math intervention that we, uh, class that we have created now where we place kids in that, Algebra I, dealing specifically with that. Um, do you want to?
Couple of things. We don't do as much skill-based. Um, and we're working towards that. Next year, we've made a proposal and have been talking about it since November to have a period that's called Seminar. It's, uh, been called a lot of different things here. I think at one time it was Phoenix Time or, or Rise Up Time or, but... Yeah, but high, very much focused next year on, on performance. And so various, for skills, because we don't have that at the high school, in the high school schedule. Um, I also want to make sure I mention that, um, Danny Zilich, our Director of Athletics, and Kristin, combined, really do work. We have an after-school initiative where we are identifying students who are at risk regarding performance in the classroom. And we are not asking them, we're sort of, we're mandating that they attend and get the support that they need. Uh, that's different than we've had in, in years past. And we've had the support of, of the staff who are willing to help us with that.
Want to give a little plug for Branching Minds too? We have a program called Branching Minds now where we can track our interventions. And so part of teachers' duties every week is logging how the interventions are going with the students that we have identified need that. And it makes beautiful little graphs and everything, so you can actually see a kid's progress visually, which I think is a great indicator for the teachers of how things are going. So that's been another really wonderful tool. And the teacher just goes in and logs every week how the interventions are going with that specific student.
Quick question. So the special time that's now mandated, you said it was the athletic director and another individual. Is that because it's focusing on the student athletes, or is that where it came from? Why is that?
It originally actually was not the student athletes. We just added the student athletes to it. So we had students that we had identified and the teachers had identified as needing extra support. And so we built in the after-school time. We got a teacher who can do English and a teacher who can do math and a teacher who can do science, who regularly man that. So kind of all of our bases are covered as far as the kids needing help. And then we strongly suggest that they attend slash mandate for certain students. And I know for the athletes, I think it's mandated that they attend.
Last week, we had, we had one of the sessions, we actually had four nine-scholar tutors show up. So not only did we have our two certified staff, we had an additional four. And now we're talking about really getting work done, uh, to, to promote student growth.
Alright, hello.
Hi.
Um, data, analyzing data, uh, begins with the building leadership team, the BLT. And that is, we look at all of the data that, that Misha shared and a little bit more. And that's where the larger building level decisions are make, like, made, such as we need, um, a literacy intervention period, which we started a few years ago. And then, uh, realizing that we needed a math intervention period and starting that. That we, um, need a time for not only grade-level teams to meet, but we also need time for vertical alignment so that all of the ELA teachers can meet and all of the math teachers can meet. Um, and so, again, analyzing data starts at, at the building level with the BLT, the Building Leadership Team, where a lot of those decisions are made. And, um, it trickles down into the teacher-based teams. So, um, at Langston, teachers have five planning periods that are undisturbed each week, one a day. And they have two additional duty periods that are often planning periods. If we don't need teachers to, um, support in another area, then they have those two additional periods each week for planning. Then they have three periods each week that are for their teacher-based teams. And so one of those meetings, they might analyze data with their, uh, NYPD, Middle Years Program, where they meet with Kristin Miller, our NYPD coordinator, to go over things. And that's, they meet with Kristin Miller twice a month, and then the other two times, they meet as a grade-level team um, to do whatever they want to talk about, whatever they feel like the needs are on the team. Um, another one of those meeting days of the three is where they're analyzing data. They're meeting with Tiara, um, primarily with Tiara. Sometimes I, I join if I'm able. And they're meeting as a grade-level team, and she'll talk more about what they do specifically with that. And then the third meeting each week is RTI, Response to Intervention. So obviously, there's lots of intervention happening in the classroom, outside of the classroom. And that's a time dedicated to look at that data, to see how well the interventions are working and make some new decisions based on that. Um, another one of those BLT decisions, Building Leadership Team decisions, that was made a few years ago, again, is for that vertical alignment, for teachers to be able to meet. Um, and we had to build that time in by, that's, that's why we have the library time that we have now. Students didn't always have time in the library. They would schedule it to meet. Um, you know, the teachers would take them. But we created this time, so it's an additional time for teachers to meet, but it doesn't take away from their designated planning period or their three, uh, meetings that they have each week that are part of the contract. And so their vertical team time, and again, I'll let Tiara speak more on that, is where they get to meet per grade level at a time. Um, and we had to build that in because it wasn't something that teachers had in the past. Questions about that? Alright.
Thank you for telling us all the acronyms.
You're welcome. I started with that. I heard that.
Thank you.
Um, so I'll just talk a little bit about what our teacher-based teams are, the TBTs. And again, um, like Mrs. Hicks shared, one of those TBTs is a grade-level meeting. And so I meet with the sixth-grade team, the seventh-grade team, the eighth-grade team. And largely, those meetings have looked, um, for the past couple of years, more like a professional development cycle. Um, some schools call them PLCs or professional learning communities. And so largely, when I meet with the grade-level teams, it's often about a, an evidence-based practice that we have already received training on. So, um, as you all know, we have had the literacy grant, um, for, you know, last year was our last year of having that for K eight. And so a lot of the science of reading training that I'm sure you've heard about from the state of Ohio was delivered during those grade-level team meetings. Um, we had a platform that we bought with our, with our grant money to facilitate that professional development learning for literacy. Um, so the last three, four years, there was a lot of focus on literacy and those evidence-based literacy strategies during that grade-level TBT. Um, this year, we've asked teachers to give us feedback on those topics that they want to learn about. So we've done a session or a module on differentiation, on offering student voice and choice. That's what we're currently focused on. We've also done modules on discussion protocols, different ways that they can engage students in discussion because we know that stu, when students are talking, they're learning. And so we need, you know, teachers really needed, um, discussion protocols to facilitate in that classroom. So those are just some examples of topics we've covered in the past. Vocabulary strategies, my goodness, we have a lot of those. Um, comprehension strategies, writing strategies. Um, so we've, we've covered a lot of topics in those grade-level meetings. Um, and as Mrs. Hicks just shared, we also have that vertical team time, that department-level time where, um, the maths, the math teachers meet, social studies teachers meet, science teachers meet, ELA teachers meet. And we also have a vertical time for our intervention specialists to meet, and they really greatly need that time. And specials as well. Um, with the, I'm sorry, I'm, I forgot to mention the specials during the other grade-level TBTs. Um, and so, um, with those vertical department teams, that's where a lot of data analysis comes from because you're with your content area that you're specializing in what you know. And so, um, I'll just give you an example. For the math department, for example, I asked all the math teachers to give a pre-assessment. It, like Kristin Miller shared, it could be a chunk, a checkpoint that was offered through the state of Ohio. It could be a unit pre-test that they off, you know, offering their curriculum. Um, but they had to give a pre-assessment. And then we go through something called the Five Step Process, which is the Ohio Improvement Process, which starts with your pre-assessment data. Step one, you have to have that, and you have to chart it out, measure who's proficient, who's not. You look at subgroup data. And then step two is all about analyzing that data. What is the data showing us? Are there any current trends? Do we see any areas of strength? What areas of growth are we seeing in that data? Step three then is all about those evidence-based instructional strategies. And that's where we really get into the nitty-gritty of like, what are we actually going to do in our classrooms to make significant gains with our students? I think that is the piece that, um, teachers really get to share their expertise. Like Kristin said too, um, this is where teachers get to shine and say, oh, I heard about this at a conference. Like, here's the, the data to support this, and I want to show you guys how to do this in your class. Step four then would be me scheduling with the teachers, when can I come in to see you doing these practices and give you feedback on them? Or if a, if a, if a team isn't feeling strong about a certain strategy, that's when I can come in to model or to coach you, to co-teach with those teachers. So that's step four, you schedule that time. And then step five, after a couple of weeks of implementing this, then we schedule a post-assessment and we analyze the data. Did our evidence-based instructional strategy have an impact on classroom performance for students? So that's just a, a very broad overview of... So that's just a very broad overview of what we do with our TBTs. Again, those teacher-based teams. And the grade-level teams are, right now, are focused on that professional learning. And our vertical TBTs are more so focused on that data analysis from a variety of different assessments that we can give students. Did I miss anything?
No.
Okay. So that was the answer to the first two questions. A few examples about our current interventions. I know Mrs. Hicks shared at the last board meeting, great math interventions that we have. But we have a range of ELA interventions. Say that again. We have students, again, our literacy grant really helped close the gap for the students who are struggling with those basic decoding skills. So prior to the grant, I mean, we were seeing a lot of kids coming up who could not read the words on a page. And now, that number is very, very few of students who cannot pick up words off the page. And so, they have a specific program for that. Then, we have students who may really need help with vocabulary. We have a specific intervention for that. And so, we have a lot of great things going. I could give more details. I can give names of programs. But we have those interventions during that ELA RISE time and that math RISE time. Same thing for the enrichment.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Mrs. Hicks. Well, good evening. We're here for OAS. This is Joy Harrison. She's one of our academic coaches here. She's going to help me go through these questions. So we mirror a lot of what's happening at OHS and LMS. When we think about teachers looking at assessments and progress monitoring data, it's all the time. We really start with backwards design. So we actually start with our assessment calendar that Ms. Baker helps us develop. And then, everything is kind of built around that because we want to make sure we know when those milestones are throughout the school year, like the third graders taking the fall OST, when iReady diagnostics are going to be done. And that's used to develop our BLT calendar. Our BLT calendar is, we meet bi-weekly, so about every two weeks. If you're ever interested, we meet at 7:00 AM here at OAS, if you're an early riser. And we do, we do a lot of building-wide data discussions, like trends that we see over years, but also patterns we see across grade levels. We look at iReady data, OST data, attendance, discipline, lots of different aspects of what's happening in the building. Then, that trickles down to our TBTs, so our teacher-based teams. BLT is Building Leadership Team.
Thank you.
I caught it. So our TBTs, teacher-based teams, and our RTI, which is Response to Intervention, those two meetings are kind of bridged off of the BLT. And it flows both ways. So information from the TBTs and the RTIs come up to BLT. Each grade level here has a representative on the BLT. And they bring things from their team that needs to come to the building leadership team. And then, they also disseminate information that happens at our bi-weekly meetings. When we think about progress monitoring, we also use Branching Minds. That's been awesome. I am the spreadsheet queen. My staff laughs that I have a spreadsheet for everything. And Branching Minds has made that a lot easier for me, which is great, but I still like to create them. But teachers can go in, and it can be any teacher who's assigned to that student. So one of the benefits is, if I am a teacher and I share a student with Joy for some academic area, I can go in and see what Joy's doing with that student in math and how it transfers over to my class. Specials teachers have access. That's been great this year. So they have a better awareness of accommodations that a student might need for a writing assignment, a reading assignment, math that they're going to do in the specials areas. And our intervention specialists, of course, have access also. So the progress monitoring happens consistently, definitely supported by our Title I Department for Title I Reading and some Title I Math. I'm going to let Joy talk a little bit more about what happens at our teacher-based team meetings.
So we have all established that math is a great area of need. And we are working tirelessly to make sure we address that need. So Mrs. Baker introduced you to iReady. iReady is a magnificent resource. So what iReady diagnostic does for us as educators, as teachers, is it creates something called a prerequisite report. And because we're using iReady 2024, because we are now using that as our curriculum, what the diagnostic does is it creates a report, unit by unit, for each grade level. And in that report, it's a prerequisite planning report, each grade-level team at the beginning of a unit gets to see each individual student on priority prerequisite skills, who has mastered those prerequisite skills, who needs additional support in those skills, and who needs in-depth review. So the new movement around intervention says, in mathematics, we need to address areas of need within a unit of study, not just a general overall need. And the reason is so that within a unit of study, whether you are on an IEP or whether you're a struggling student, you will be able to receive just that support that helps you reach for the grade-level curriculum. So with an outstanding teacher, and that's what we have, outstanding teachers, and the work of an interventionist, you have a double dose of support around a child within their unit of study, and that gap is closing. It will take us a few years because it's just our second year in a new curriculum, but the architecture of the curriculum is brilliant. And the resources for teachers to be able to address student needs is granular. So it's very helpful. So during TBTs, if we're looking at the data in a prerequisite report, already, we have teacher moves and interventionist moves for each individual child. So we look at the data, unit by unit, in TBTs. And in a teacher-based team meeting, we look at Tier One. We know all of our students and where they stand on every criteria within that unit. And then, we can plan for scaffolds within Tier One during the teacher-based teams. And then, during RTI or Response to Intervention meetings, we can say what happens during that intervention time. And I want to say thank you, Felicia. Thank you for creating a schedule which has intervention time embedded for every grade level, but not at the same time. So interventionists can pull out students without interfering with any Tier One instruction. So my hope is that we're on a five-year arc. This year, we'll see some improvements. Next year, perhaps double the improvement. And then, following that year, we'll all be caught up. Year five. Year five, 100% proficient.
100%.
I was just going to share, Joy really heads up our math interventions and math department for Title. We do have an academic coach for ELA, English Language Arch, and it mirrors the same. We're using a lot of data points from Acadiance, which measures things like nonsense, word fluency, regular fluency, ability to retell, letter sounds, and iReady and OSTs for our ELA programming. When we think about current interventions, something that our BLT looked at is, as we looked at those patterns and trends across grade levels, we chose a few key skills that would bridge all units to make longer cycles. So for ELA, we've been really focused on writing. I'm really proud of our kindergartners, especially right now, because I had some papers delivered to my office where they're writing sentences and working on spacing and capitals and does the picture match what they wrote. So if you ask them of what CUP stands for, hopefully, our kindergartners know, which is capitals, organizations, punctuation, and spelling. I had to think about it, but they know it much quicker. All the way up to our fifth grade, who's working on elaboration. And for math, we've been working a lot on modeling and reasoning, getting kids to show their thinking from the concrete manipulative to the abstract and application. So that's just been a kind of a broad brush of what we've been doing. I'll give us a 30-second version. Joy also helps us with math for enrichment. So we have a little more flexibility in how we utilize the Title Math because there are so many constraints tied to the TGRG, Third Grade Reading Guarantee, about who we're servicing for literacy. We don't have the same mandates and constraints for math. So Joy's also been working with some of our students who on iReady would be working on enrichment. So they were scoring in the 99th, 95th percentile and pushing them a little bit further. And that is K through three. All right. Any questions for us?
Can you just say what DLT stands for?
District Leadership Team. All right. Thanks.
All righty, just a little update, and then, we're going to move over to Sheila Felix, who's going to talk to you a little bit about the world of people services, special education. And then, we'll come back to the high school to talk a little bit more about IB and some of their programming. TBT, as they say, Teacher-Based Team, Building Leadership Team, District Leadership Team. And then, she's going to talk to us about MTSS, the Multi-Tiered System of Support. So one of the things in understanding TBT, DLT, and BLT is, as they said, it goes up and down, right? We've tried a couple of things with our district leadership team. And this year, we just wanted to get our feet wet to learn what truly should a district leadership team do. Once upon a time, we thought was just sitting in a room and just making all the decisions for the district. But it really was, let's actually share out what we're doing. And this year, we got an opportunity for each building to hear from each other and to discuss what some of the strategies were that they were using. Because what we were learning is, we want to build systems. We want to be consistent. And that's what our district leadership team really wanted to build this year, is listen to what the community wanted us to, you know, listen to the community, listen to the staff, and also talk about consistent systems that we need to put in place or that we were putting in place. Wanted to hit you a little bit with, uh, hit you a little bit with benchmark assessments. That came up a couple of times. And I want to explain what that is. Couple of years ago, the state of Ohio said, hey, you know, COVID, when COVID hit us, we were taking the Ohio State Test, OST. And they said, well, let's give you some supports to work with. So we're going to create what's called Benchmark Assessments. And the Benchmark Assessments are online state tests. It's the same timeframe, same amount of questions, same amount of writing, but it's now in their portal that will give you real-time results. That was a couple of years ago. It was just out there. They taught us how to do it. And then, they said, guess what? We're going to teach you how to author your own. You get to pick and choose from the ones we have here to kind of develop your own. And we were kind of all over the place with, do we use it? Don't we use it? Who's using it? What does it help us with? And then, within the last year, the state said, well, tears, they said, we're going to also give you checkpoints, which is a smaller version that should only have about eight questions that are on one specific standard, not the whole test, that you can use to kind of say, hey, did they really understand this concept when I taught it? But once again, they introduced it, they put it out there, they give you a little PD on it, and then, you log in and you say, this is not what they said. So there was some refinement. This year, they actually refined it to the point where they have developed what we call pre-assessments and post-assessments. We're already giving the state test. So who's giving all of those tests? We kind of talked about, why don't we start off throughout the district, three through 12, and say, let's give that benchmark at the beginning of the year? So someone would say, well, why wouldn't we just use the state test from the spring? We can. However, if I am a geometry teacher, looking at last year's geometry doesn't really help me with this group of students. I could look at the algebra students, but I really want to know for geometry. So now, I can give that benchmark assessment straight up on geometry, right there, on the geometry standards. And that can help me guide my instruction throughout the year. And that's what our great coaches and principals have also used as a tool. So you say, well, why didn't you show me that data? This is the first year where there's a little bit more guidance from the state in terms of pre, post-authoring. They've given us a little bit here and there, but it's been a lot more consistent and systematic as we've talked about. So we, this was our experimental year as a district, to be able to discuss the data, see what do we need to take out, what do we need to include? Because we don't want to overburden our students with a lot of tests. So coming into next year, we'll have a little bit more structure to be able to explain what did we learn from that. When we did last talk, we did see growth in our math, which is a positive. But we need to see a lot more growth. And I'm now going to turn it over to Sheila Felix.
Good evening. I wanted to talk a little bit about MTSS, which is Multi-Tiered Systems of Support. And as I was sitting here thinking, I was like, oh, gosh, I wish I would have included this graphic, but I'm going to try to describe it for you. So MTSS, we can think of as being like the umbrella and the components of RTI, Response to Intervention, and PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Support, live under that umbrella and provide us sort of framework for analyzing student data and making decisions based on that data. I did want to include this graphic because at the end of January, I believe it was, I was in a strategic planning committee meeting, and Ms. Muckey was trying to explain MTSS to that committee. And I felt like this graphic would have really helped hammer the point home I was trying to make. But we think of our instruction as being in different tiers. So at Tier One, that's the instruction that everyone receives. It's the core academic content. And we would expect about 80 to 90% of students to respond to that Tier One instruction. For those students that we have identified through our benchmark assessments that maybe are lagging behind their peers, we would look at providing them some Tier Two interventions. We would expect about 5 to 15% of students to need intervention in Tier Two. And in a couple of slides, I have some examples of what Tier Two and Three interventions look like. So let's say we have a student that is in need of Tier Two. We offer them some small group instruction, two days a week for 30 minutes. If they are then participating in this instruction for a period of several weeks, and we're progress monitoring and seeing that, you know what, they're really not making the growth that we would expect to see, then we would consider moving them to Tier Three, which is essentially the same interventions but intensified. So we might look at increasing the amount of time. Instead of two days, maybe they would get three to four days of that additional instruction. We might have a small group of three or four students receiving the same Tier Two instruction. But if we have a student that needs Tier Three, we might decrease that group size to a one-to-one or two-to-one type setting. I did include some data from Branching Minds, and I will give two disclaimers on the data here. So first one is, Branching Minds is a new system for me. I am still learning the ins and outs. The second disclaimer is, this is only as good as the data that Branching Minds is ingesting. So what this is reflective of is our iReady data for the elementary and the middle school, also Acadiance data, based on levels that we have determined. Originally, I had sent this report to that committee. And at the time, what I thought I was looking at was the number or percentage of students in those tiered plans. But that is not reflective of the students that have those tiered plans in Branching Minds. This is reflective of the data from iReady and Acadiance. For the high school, we had some issues with personal student identifiers being able to load into the system. So their data is a little bit older. It's not current OST data. But just to kind of give you a general overview, this is a tier-level report in reading. And, you know, one thing that I can glean from looking at that is, we look at the district overall, the top bar, which reflects all the buildings. We have 60.9% of students responding to Tier One or at Tier One. So, you know, some of the things that we can put in place are whole-group interventions as well as some individualized interventions for those students that we've identified. So this is reading. And this is math. And some examples of Tier Two and Three interventions that we have, I know the buildings kind of gave a good overview of some things that they're doing. But Title One, small group tutoring, study tables at the high school. The elementary school is doing something called the Be Their Buddy Program, which is an attendance intervention. We're looking to, hopefully by next year, offer Check and Connect, which is another intervention for attendance. We have some social emotional skills groups that meet with the social workers. We have counseling available through Januzzi Counseling in Applewood. ABA Therapy Services supports students, both in Tier Two, Tier Three, and in special education, with either informal recommendations or recommendations or comprehensive functional behavior assessments and behavior intervention plans. And being new to the district this year, I really came in wanting to spend a lot of time listening and observing and understanding what the needs are, but we have done some work this year around our MTSS practices. Like, at the beginning of the year, the high school building leadership team participated in some additional training with branching minds. I've been meeting with the RTI coordinators, academic coaches, to make revisions to the existing MTSS handbook. There are weekly grade-level RTI meetings, and I've been working on creating some guidance documents with the coaches, just to unify our practices across the district, provide some consistency, and just give people some steps to follow if they're not sure what to do.
Quick question. Would you have phone script there?
Yes.
What's that for?
So, we talked, actually yesterday, I got to attend both the OES and Langston staff meetings, and we talked about parent involvement in that RTI process. And when we have a student who's identified as receiving tier-two supports, we want the teacher to make contact with the family at that time. So, I did, I was able to find a prefilled phone script through branching minds. I kinda tweaked it to fit our needs, put it on our letterhead, and uploaded it into branching minds for staff to use if they need help getting started with the conversation. Just some tips on what to say, how to frame the conversation to be the most collaborative and positive as possible. Any other questions?
Well, looking at those numbers, because when I got that report, I was like, mm-hmm, this is nice. I have no idea what this really says, and so I had the presence of mind to ask. And now that I see those numbers, and you're saying, well, they might not be exactly right, are we gonna be able to get the more accurate numbers, or are those right?
The elementary and middle school should reflect our current data. It was the issue with, we were relying on the high school OST scores to feed into branching minds, but it wasn't, I don't wanna put Steve on the spot, but you could probably explain it much better. Yeah.
The OST scores do actually ingest into branching minds properly. What the issue is, the benchmarks that you guys do throughout the course of the year, there's no local student number, so there's no way to map that data to the students in branching minds.
Thank you, and Steve has been a tremendous help in helping me navigate the system as I learn.
And then one other quick note regarding how it ingests those scores. If a student, for example, received a 699 score on their biology, missed the achievement by that one point, but is doing great at our school, it identifies them as an at-risk learner, and it puts them in that category, and they, they continue to reside there. So, we're trying to sort through that with branching minds, because we're not concerned about that student. That student is progressing with the curriculum just fine. So, we're working with branching minds to sort out some of those data glitches.
Well, yeah, I guess that's what my question is, because looking at, so, that diagram that you gave us, that graphic was awesome. To kinda give you a sense of what, you know, MTSS is about, well, the RTI, what the different tiers are about, and the percentage that you should expect. Our percentages are bigger, right? Are tier-three and tier-two, like in one of those data, yeah, for the middle school, that's 39.5% is in tier-three. Yeah. So, I'm like, when you started explaining what it was, I'm like, ah! So, yeah, what does, what are we doing?
And I have seen this, the tiers that, when we say, we expect 80 to 90%, that's, you know, general averages. I have seen in other districts where it's more flipped, and you only have 10 to 15% of students responding at tier-one, and then needs to intervene, higher percentages of students needing tier-two and tier-three instruction. And what it says to me is, we could really look at our tier-one practices, and, you know, if there, if it's additional training on the curriculum to deliver that instruction with fidelity, and maybe the programs that we're using. So, it is, you know, something that we, we recognize we're not where we would expect to be, but there is a lot of good work being done to address that in, in the buildings through the RTI and the TBTs.
That RTI graphic, too, is like an ideal scenario. This is what you're trying to achieve, and it's, it's very unlikely that schools actually fit into that model. And so, you know, we've, in many of our trainings, they always present this, and obviously, the goal is to have that tier-one instruction be as strong as possible, but that's like ideal scenario. You miss no school because of snow days. You have no disruptions during all of your classes for 180 days of school, and so, it's a really nice graph to try to go for, but it's very rarely achieved in reality.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, I'm looking at the numbers that are sort of grayed out. It says that, so, the 560 number are what ranked as tiers, and then there's another number that says total enrollment, period. Am I looking at the fact that there are some kids that are not on tier-one, two, tier-two, or tier-three at all?
Yes. There are a small percentage that don't have a tier identified, and that could be a number of reasons. It could be, they didn't take the diagnostic assessment at some point. They might've moved in from another district, and we don't have that data from earlier in the year. I can definitely do some more digging on that.
Like, you're looking at the high school numbers.
Yeah, that's what I was like, JVS students.
The number in a high school, so you are missing some students, and that counts.
Yes.
Right. That's why I was like, there's numbers missing on all grades, and I was like, hmm, is that because the kids aren't?
Yes, and, and thank you, as, as, you know, right, we grow with branching minds. When we were looking at the I-Ready data as well, you would notice that it would say 340 out of 359.
Right.
There are students who move in and move out. They didn't take the one assessment, or they didn't take both assessments, or someone may have taken I-Ready but didn't take the Acadiance assessment. So, they don't, they were not tiered. Or you're JVS students at the high school, or someone who hasn't taken, you know, whatever assessment. When you see that, those students were tiered because there's not enough data points, or they weren't here to place them, because the system automatically places them in a tier. There wasn't enough data points to place them in a tier.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions on MTSS? I would like to pivot a little bit and talk about some things in special education. If I can get the clicker to advance here. We maybe need a new battery. Okay. There we go. So, I kinda broke this down into some findings that were based on a special education audit that was done by Kathy Perico, I believe, the 22, 23 school year. So, that was given to me when I first started and contained a lot of really good information to help inform my plans and, you know, help me make sense of what's been happening in the district. So, one of the findings in that audit was that there is a significant lack of compliance across ETR, which is the Evaluation Team Report, IEP, Individualized Education Program, PR01, which is a prior written notice. It's a notice that we send to families anytime we have a team meeting, make a decision about special education, and then corresponding progress reports. And some of the things that we have done to address this finding is, we've created an internal monitoring team. We are reviewing IEP documents, and I am giving feedback and coaching to the intervention specialists. I am fortunate to work with a really great team of intervention specialists who has been very receptive to receiving feedback and really wanting to make changes and improve their practice. I'm especially fortunate to work with Ms. Lassiter, who's an elementary intervention specialist, as well as a member of the internal monitoring team, and I asked her if she could just give a little testimonial as to the work that's been done on that team. So, I'll turn it over to you.
So, over the past few months, we have been collaborating with the ESC, the Educational Service Center for the Rain County, and five other districts to focus on, to refine our IEP writing process. We've had our People's Services Director, Student and Family Support Coordinator, School Psychologist, Related Service Providers, and Intervention Specialists from each of our buildings to be a part of this team. We started the process by looking at what's working well, what are our needs, and what type of support do we need to become compliant with our IEPs. We've engaged in meticulous reviews of the IEP through these training sessions. We have gone through all the details of each section of the Individualized Education Plan, the IEPs, and we are learning, all of us in special education know that the expectations for this document changes every year. There are changes made at the state level. There are times when we get recommendations from attorneys, so there's always a change. The way you did it last year may not be the way you do it this year, and it's not gonna be how you're gonna do it next year. So, we are working very hard at trying to align our IEPs so that they are compliant with the state, so that they reflect best practices, so that they are legally sound, and so that they are consistent both within our building, our district, and amongst other districts and the state. This helps give our students the services they need with consistency when they move from grade to grade. This also helps when they move from district to district, to make sure that, that IEPs are compliant, and that all of the areas of the IEP are being covered in the same way. And as she said, she has done a phenomenal job. She has given us a rubric with a sample of an IEP that we can follow as we're working on our IEPs to make sure everything is consistent. She has also taken the time to review all of our drafts. So, anytime we have a new IEP coming up, we submit our draft, and she has given us incredible feedback so that we're able to be compliant. This team, this internal monitoring team, then has taken what we've learned from the ESC in these trainings, and we've come back to the district, and we've met together, and Ms. Felix has pulled IEPs from our district, and we, as a team, go through meticulously, item by item, and say, okay, is this compliant? If not, what would need to change to make this particular section, this sentence, this area compliant? So, we're getting that done, and then this can trickle down into training and support for all of our intervention specialists and our school psychologists and related service providers, so that we are all consistent across the district and have compliant IEPs.
This is a tool to help us identify any systemic issues that we might be having, and to address those, like Ms. Lassiter said, through professional development. So, we, you know, as we've been getting up and running this year, and have spent some time getting training, the plan is next year to have quarterly meetings with the team for about a half-day, and then the months in between, an after-school meeting for the purpose of reviewing documents and planning for professional development. Oh, and this just explains everything that we already kind of explained. And I did include links to some of the documents that we're using. There's one that was, there we go, the IEP draft feedback form. Would you mind clicking on that link, Dr. Hall, just so we can kinda see? This is the form that I use when I'm reviewing an IEP. I haven't talked to the internal monitoring team yet, but I'm, I'm thinking of ways that I can improve my process for next year, and I'm thinking about using this to review the first three drafts from each intervention specialist, and based on the amount of feedback that I'm giving, giving them then a tiered rating of green, yellow, or red. Green being, you're good. You don't have to keep submitting drafts to me. Yellow, maybe I'd like to see a few more, and red, I, you know, maybe need to provide some more individualized attention to that particular teacher. So, this breaks it down by each section of the IEP. On the left-hand side, it shows what we're looking for, and it goes beyond just compliance with the state. It really focuses on best practice, so we can develop robust plans for our students. And then the column on the right is just where I add any notes or feedback that I then share with the teachers.
So, where Ms. Lassiter said that a rubric was created for them, this is where, and you created that?
Yeah. It, it was created in collaboration with colleagues of mine from a previous district, and I adopted it for Oberlin based on some practices. It's, as educators, we like to steal from the best and borrow the rest, and had something that was working. So, there are two other documents linked there, and the Record Review Tally Form and the Record Review Guide are documents from the state that guide us when we're reviewing those. This tally form allows us to input section by section with the records that we're reviewing. Did we find that compliant or not? And then we can go to the tally page and get a percentage of, for example, Section 6, which is the measurable annual goals, we might've found 75% to be non-compliant. That would tell me, that's an area that we need to focus on in some PD. Any questions on internal monitoring? Another finding from the audit was the number of aides or paraprofessionals employed by the district was found to be high based on student need that was identified in IEPs. So, way that we are, ways that we are working to address that are, you know, trying to be really intentional about how we're scheduling students, so that we're not stretching our staff really thin and have a lot of people in a lot of different places that have similar support needs. I have also, if, would you mind clicking to advance, because this is, thank you. I've also provided the intervention specialist with a guidance document that is also linked on the next slide, I believe. It helps them to make a determination of when to add paraprofessional support. There is, it's basically a manual. It talks about supervision, fading, using paraprofessional support, and then in the back of that manual, there is a rubric that has four different areas. We look at a student's behavior, their ability to participate in instruction, any health needs, any inclusion needs, and then there's also a school day analysis, which prompts the intervention specialist to really take a look at the day-to-day activities, where the student needs support. So, in order to reduce the amount of paraprofessional support added to student IEPs, we are just looking really critically at what the need is based on those parameters. So, if you wouldn't mind clicking on that link, we can just take a quick peek. So, first couple pages are about background and information, why we would use paraprofessional support, how we work with and train our paraprofessionals. And if you keep scrolling towards the end, there are some appendices that are, yep. So, that's the school day analysis, and then the page right before that is the rubric. Oh, yep. The last form is a plan for support. So, if this rubric were filled out, and the school day analysis, and the team said, yes, this student absolutely needs that level of support, then Appendix C is where you would use it to guide that plan for, okay, do we need them all day? Do we need them just in specials, just in academics, just with transitions, just to really drill down to... really drill down to what's needed? Would you mind going back to the slideshow? Thank you. Just to give you an idea of what our staffing looks like with our paraprofessionals, we did have two paraprofessional resignations at the beginning of the year. We were trying to see if we could get by without filling those, but we ended up having student needs that mandated that we have, those paraprofessionals. So, Oberlin Elementary has the most. They have 11. Two of those are dedicated to the preschool full-time. They're used in ratio there, so they're firmly planted there at the pre-K. And then we have nine that support grades K through 5. Langston has four. The high school has four. And then we also employ one paraprofessional that we send to Murray Ridge for one of our students who attends there. And then the last finding I will talk about is there is a need for all buildings to clearly articulate their service model in their buildings, and this kind of speaks to the continuum of services. I will admit, this is an area of challenge, especially in a small district. There, the way that I'm working to address that is by collaborating with the building principals around student schedules. I met with Ms. Weber yesterday. I have meetings on the calendar to meet with each of the principals and discuss scheduling needs, making sure that our students with disabilities have the appropriate amount of support built into their day. But I did include a graphic on the next slide to kind of illustrate the continuum, what I'm talking about. So, we always want students to be educated in their least restrictive environment, and the general education classroom with supports would be the starting point. As students, as student needs demonstrate a need for a more restrictive environment, we would move through the continuum from left to right and maybe look at a special education classroom. Currently, at the elementary school, we have a self-contained K through 2 room. We have a resource room that serves students in grades 3 through 5. That's more push-in, pull-out, as opposed to being self-contained. So, those students in 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade might be getting some of their core instruction from an intervention specialist, but are still participating in the general education classroom for a lot of their day. If, you know, a special education classroom is not working for a student, then we look at separate facility placements, and then further down the continuum, we would be looking at like a student who might be homebound or need a residential facility for their services. Just to give you an idea of some of the out-of-district placements that we have, we're currently partnering with these facilities. We have three students at Murray Ridge, two at Spectrum, one at the Achievement Center, five at Education Alternatives, and one at PEP. And I will say, it hurts my heart to think about sending our kids away, and I want to work with these facilities to bring our students back as they show readiness. I've worked really closely with EA this year. They've recommended a couple students that they think might be ready to transition back to public school. So, we'll come up with, we're in the process of coming up with a plan of support to make it a smooth transition. We don't want to pull them from an EA and put them in a general education classroom, because at some point, they needed that more restrictive environment. So, we'll look at partial day transitions to start, where they maybe spend a couple of hours with us, and still maintain that out-of-district placement. Should things not, should they not be ready, we still have that support for them. And that was all I had on.
I have one question.
Yeah?
I know you said our number of aides is high, and I'm wondering if the number of aides is what helps us keep kids in general education classrooms?
I think where the audit was coming from was based on the students who have identified paraprofessional support in their IEP. But that is a really good point. You know, one thing that we would look at before moving a student to a more restrictive setting is what other supports can we put in place in the setting that they're currently at? Additional adult support is one. I will be honest, I am a believer that as we get older, we don't want to have our students relying on that adult support. We want to foster their independence. So, we've been starting to have some more conversation about what it looks like to fade some of that paraprofessional support, how to gradually release some of that responsibility back onto the student, so that they don't become overly reliant on additional adult. I don't know, did I even answer your question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, a little bit.
Okay.
I guess it's, I'm curious if, like, if that's helping, then is it actually too many? You know, if having those extra paraprofessionals, because we also know that in a general education classroom, that paraprofessional is not always just helping the student that they are there for, but helping some of the other students that might need additional help as well. And I'd be curious what the teacher's opinion is on the number of paraprofessionals.
Yeah. Oh, and I can tell you, our paraprofessionals work incredibly hard, and there's always something for them to do. I think from the context of the audit, she was looking specifically at the correlation to support listed in IEPs and the staffing that we have, and making recommendations for how we could better align our resources.
It was based on the numbers that we have, of course, like state, whatever. If you have this many ISs, you probably have this many parapros, but certainly it varies the school you go to.
Right. And with our high number of Tier 3 instruction, are our paraprofessionals providing some of that as well?
And that's where PD come in, after you've been working with them and also identifying their areas. They've been attending a lot of professional development, which is great that you've been providing for them, the most I've seen in the last couple of years.
They, I started a paraprofessional forum for each of the buildings, and this year, as I said, I wanted to do a lot of listening and observing, and my intention was to provide a forum for them to come and vent, seek advice, share stories, collaborate. I think moving into next year, I'll be more intentional about creating some, like, bite-sized PD during those times that they can walk away with, oh, you know, I learned something valuable. But it is not a mandatory meeting, so, you know, just making sure that the information is disseminated to everyone, even those people that choose not to attend, is something that I'm trying to think through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to hand it back over to Ms. Baker.
We've been here for a while here, right? And so, we're wrapping it up. I know. Listen. So, imagine if we have the full thing, right? There's no way. There's just no way we could do it in this amount of timeframe. So, we're down to our last couple of topics here, one of them being the IB exam, and then Mr. Betts is going to talk a little bit about some of the programs quickly, and then it looks like we're about done after that. How about that? So, I'm going to have Mrs. Miller come up and talk to you a little bit about the IB information. What you see up there is raw information. So, good luck with it.
I'll try to make sense of it for you, and I will try not to use acronyms if I can.
If you use them, just tell us what it is.
So, the thing that I want you to keep in mind as you're looking at this too, especially when you see the world average there, I was Googling feverishly, trying to find the percentage for you, but all I could come up with is a majority. A majority of IB schools in the world are private or magnet, meaning they select who gets to take these exams, and we take the opposite philosophy, where we welcome kids to take the exams and to take these courses and to improve upon their learning. So, as you look at that world average versus our average, kind of keep that in the back of your head. So, we have the IB scores here, just kind of over the past couple of years. So, last year, we had nine who were full diploma candidates, meaning they took the six IB courses required by IB, and they did the extra essay, and they did the extra community service and action, and the philosophy class that went along with that. So, we had nine kids who did that. This year, we have six. It fluctuates from year to year. I think next year, we have 12. We have 12 juniors right now. So, it's kind of a roller coaster of who chooses to participate in that full diploma program. However, we had 36 students last year take an IB exam. Of those 36 kids, there were 83 exams that they took in all, and you can see the breakdown there. If you take a look at your sheet here, it gives you our average score. I don't know about your familiarity with IB scores, but it goes from 7 to 1. I would consider a 7 to be, oh my gosh, that kid is brilliant. It is not an A+, a 7 is an A++. So, when you see that we had a kid get a 7 in math, that's amazing. And I would be perfectly happy if my kid got a 3 on an IB exam. I feel like a 3 is decent, a 4 is good, 5 is great, 6 is wow, 7 is holy cow. So, that kind of gives you the scale and the kids who achieve that. And you can kind of see our demographic breakdown there. Any, I know that's a lot on one page.
I mean, I asked about, in particular, how many African-American students are encouraged to or, you know, suggested to them to actually do full IB. I got that question from a community member. I had a child that attended the schools. Nobody talked to him about doing IB. I mean, he's about to graduate college, so, but I just, can I get an answer to that question?
Yeah.
Would we want to encourage black kids to?
Of our diploma candidates this year, three out of the six.
Are African-American?
African-American.
Okay. And we're encouraging them? How? How'd that come about?
In 8th grade, actually, by 8th grade, there is an opportunity night where parents are introduced to the IB information. And then each year, the high school even has information nights for parents, and they'll send stuff home. If they're our personal, do we do one-on-one personal invitations? I don't know that we do that as much as we possibly could, right? We found, I had a parent last year who said, I didn't even know my student could take IB courses, then found out their student was in IB courses. So, that's one of the things that we've talked about, is doing a better job at explaining what that actually is, because a lot of our community, they don't understand what IB is. They think that, you know, it's this foreign language only. No, it's AP courses. We're taking those advanced placement courses that are called IB International Baccalaureate Courses with the diploma program. So, we could do a better job of really going out to our community and explaining what those options are under our families.
Well, do we have staff that are kind of like identifying students that would be ideal and then suggesting it? Because I know when I was in school, it was a long time ago, people noted, oh, you'll probably be good at this, and would pull me to the side and go, hey, here, sit down, take this test, you might be gifted or something. Like, are we doing that?
Yeah. So, we have Mrs. LaHetta, who is our IB coordinator, and that is part of her job. She actually has release time to work with kids and encourage kids. She visits classes. She works hand-in-hand with our school counselor to kind of talk kids through the selection process. And it is more recruiting, I think, for our, and like, some schools with their AP, they try to exclude. Where we do the opposite, where we say, you know, your English teacher noted that, why don't you try this IB class and see how you do? I think we try to be much more inclusive. But, yeah, we, Mrs. LaHetta does work to recruit with the counselor, but we could do more.
Thank you.
And I think that's where it's that personal invitation, right? Send out flyers, we have the meetings. I didn't know you were talking to me, right? We get a lot of that. And we've talked about how do we alter our communication? How do we edit it? How do we work with it so that people do understand, yes, I am talking to you? So, that's something we need to work on. You know, do they go to every single house or call every single student's home one-on-one to say, we have these IB courses? No. Do they go to classrooms to talk to students about it? Yes. Do they, do we host parent information nights? Yes. And we start as early as 8th grade hosting those parent information nights. You know, doesn't answer your question, but it does answer your question. So, did we go probably to that student personally, one-on-one? Someone probably did not. But was the information distributed to families and opportunities? Yes. So, we need to just kind of refine, why is it that our families are not realizing that we are talking to them? And you had a chance, I think, thank you for skipping through there. You had a chance to see some of those exams, and when you looked at some of those exams, you will see that math. It's math still. It's math still. Even for our students who are taking the advanced courses we have here, it is still math that we're supporting. We have looked into some resources. Yes, IB, you know, says, please use some of these curriculum that we're suggesting. But we recognize, a curriculum is only good as the curriculum is, right? We train our teachers, we work with them, but we recognize that we may need some additional resources to kind of say, hey, it's great that you have this textbook, it's great that you have this inquiry lesson, but are we asking them the questions in a manner that makes them think deeper? Inquire? Are we mirroring some of these questions? Are they familiar with what they're asking? And so, we've been looking into a couple of sites, and one is, what is it?
In Thinking.
In Thinking, which will allow the teachers to be able to go through. Students don't have necessarily log into this, so it's not another student thing that they have to do. But it gives our teachers a resource to say, this is the type of question they're asking, and it gives them strategies on how to teach those concepts. So, you know, we've received that, of course, three of our teachers have that, and we had a conversation with the IB coordinators, and what does that look like if all of our teachers who teach those DP courses had access? So, that's what we have there. This next slide, it just took, it gives you the look in 23 and 24, in terms of national highest diploma points was 30, .24 out of 45 total points for the nation in 2023, and our highest student candidate earned 34. The average of our students was 29. And the same thing for 2024, I just thought that that was good information, that if the highest diploma average for nation is 30.32 as an average out of 45, and then our highest student was 37, and our average again was 29, just to give some information. Why six out of nine? That's been the question that comes up all the time, is like, why didn't all nine of them get it? How didn't we didn't have 100% of our students earn that IB diploma? Well, they didn't earn the 24 total points.
And that's through the tests.
Through the test exams. So, with IB, it's not enough that you just pass the class. You have to earn 24 points on your total scores. And we have students who didn't. If you saw the previous slide, we had some of our IB candidate students who might have earned a 2 in math or a 2 in ELA. And when you're earning those twos, it makes it very difficult to add up to 24 points. You need to have that 3 or higher to get those numbers in. So, you say, well, how are we helping them? And that's what we talked about, that In Think, and giving our teachers some more support. I know one of the students who was one of the three who did not make it, was a student who had not really been in honors courses. And their friends were in IB courses, they wanted to be in IB courses, and I'm glad that they did, and I'm glad they're in college, and they're making great, great of it, great, you know, working hard with it. But some of those, you know, higher-level activities and projects, they weren't necessarily something that they did all the time. And you want to talk about what you all are doing with the TBTs, with the writing aspect for IB?
Can I ask a question real quick? Do we have students that go for the IB diploma, like the ones that are coming out of their junior year that then just don't finish it? And are they in that number?
Yes, they are. We have a lot of students who, not a lot, actually, but we have students who get accepted into college their senior year, and then they're like, do I really want to challenge myself this much? Right, right. So, that's typically where we see the falloff. Or, they tried IB their junior year, and then they tried CCP, and they said, you know what? I want to go the full CCP route instead of the IB route. So, that's generally where that falloff comes from.
So, but when we have why the six of the nine, so, the nine that is counted there, they all took tests but did not get the scores, or did one or two of them just not take the test and said, never mind?
Right. The three who did not earn, took the tests but just did not score for various reasons. Yeah. Yeah. And then in our TBTs, this teacher-based teams this year, just real quick, we've put a focus on helping students succeed in those IB exams, so we've done more analysis of the structure. So, we've done more analysis of the structure of the IB exams, and we're working with all of our teachers on making questions that look more like the IB exams. We've also done an analysis of the IB writing rubric that they use to grade those exams, and we are working all the way from ninth grade up now to build writing into our curriculum that looks a lot more like what the IB exams look like and what will help kids in college too. Not just focused on that exam, but focused on really doing higher-level writing.
And that goes into middle school. One of the great things is that writing has actually moved over its way to the middle school so we can start working with the students on what does that rubric look like? Ms. Miller did a great job of working with the teams and looking at what does the state writing rubric look like? And what does the IB writing rubric look like with that literacy team? And merging it and saying, hey, we can work on this all together, starting with middle school students. An example of one of the ELA tasks for IB exam is the students have to do a writing piece based off of a piece of literature that they have read that they cannot have in front of them. So, they've got to be able to summarize, have a lot of facts, details about a book that they are not even able to have in front of them while they take the exam, that they have to do from recall. So, our teams have done a great job of selecting texts that mirror each other based on the themes. And we've even had conversations of what does that look like for our middle school students? And can we start introducing them to some of those passages, if not the full novel, when they're in middle school to become more familiar?
Because on the state tests, they read the passages and they have the passages while they're taking tests.
Right, yep, yep, yep. And this is kicking it up a notch. All right, I'm done.
And I will add, had Steve not shut down the internet today, we were due to schedule our sophomores. And our sophomores, we do make recommendations about signing up for History of Americas as they're heading into their junior year. And it's time to look at IB bio and IB physics and recommendations from our science department. All of our juniors and seniors in English take IB English, you know, so every student there. So, we do recommend, and our math department has filled out a grid in recommending students to get into IB math. So, that is, had Steve not shut us down today, we would have scheduled our sophomores in, so. And, okay, so, there's a lot to these last two slides, but Ms. Baker said quickly. So, I'm going to try to go through a couple of the, from the top part where we talk about our programming up there where it says ASL. This year, we went to an online AS, I guess it's not online, it's live. We have live streaming with the teacher for ASL, and it's going really well. We were fortunate enough this year to have a student who transitioned in from another school who had an in-person instructor for ASL. And she said the rigor of the streaming is a lot more difficult than she even is used to with in-person. So, lots of positive comments about our ASL. Next year, in scheduling from the middle school, we have 33 eighth graders who are interested in taking ASL next year. We'll have, that would be ASL one. We haven't scheduled with our current freshmen or sophomores yet, so ASL two numbers, we don't know those yet. I'll talk a little bit about the JVS. I am working closer this year with the JVS than any year before. And that has to do with another, a whole nother topic that might be another meeting that I come to. It's our Each Child on Track. We were picked to be part of a cohort where we are tracking every single student and whether they are on track for graduation, which relates to the next slide that Doc will show in a minute here. But we are working with these JVS students who have had an interest in pursuing a trade at the JVS but have struggled academically out there. So, I am bringing back a significant number of students to try to make them on track for graduation so the JVS will take them back at the start of the next school year. I think I brought one student back full-time, and I have four other students who are coming back into our school for our last period of the day to try to earn the credits that they missed out on first semester, so the JVS will let them return. So, we, I'm working closer with the team at the JVS than ever before, to be honest, and the struggling students is who I'm spending time with.
Mr. Betts, are those students across grade levels? Or is there a specific grade level that seems to struggle more at the JVS academically?
Yeah, they are. Our freshmen and sophomores don't do well out there. The JVS is a trade school, but unfortunately, the students do have to take the core. They're responsible for the core, they have to pass the test, just like the students back at our homeschool here. And I am the proud father of a JVS graduate who's doing really well. He did not go to the JVS for the core. He went for the trade. And so, our students have gone out there and struggled, and, you know, Dr. Hall and I have talked about it, and I've even encouraged our parents to potentially wait till their sophomore year, or maybe even in some cases, their junior year to go to, let's get the strong foundation academically, then go out there and pursue our trade.
I thought that used to be the rule, that you couldn't go to JVS until at least sophomore year.
It is, about, I'm going to say, four years ago, prior to that, each homeschool got about four freshmen to go. And they were really students who potentially had some transition needs where we knew that they were going to pursue a trade, we knew for sure. The JVS opened those doors, and they allowed all students, as many students from each school to go. We had a super awesome meeting out there just over a week ago. The Lorraine County Conference League met with their principal, and we had a great meeting about how we could improve the academic opportunities for these underclassmen. This is not just an Oberlin thing. So, we have had a great year relationship working with them, and they have been on board trying to support our students.
One of the things they have worked with us on is, we do, they have open-air gates to letting freshmen and sophomores go over there. We work with them too as well of trying to encourage our kids to stay. Dr. Fairclough has informed the parents that due to our unique IB program, that he would try to allow the students to mostly stay if they wish. But, and that kind of helped encourage some of our students to stay back. He says in other schools, he wants freshmen out there, he wants them for four years out there. So, we have been working with them. We just had a meeting a couple of days ago with Dr. Fairclough, his team, and discussed intervention, sharing grades, also trying to provide, when our kids do come back, provide those interventions with them. But he was very, and his team was very open to a lot of suggestions that we've offered. But they've been very cooperative lately with our team.
Yeah, they're honest about the things they can do and the things they can't do. And I really appreciate that, that clarity helps us intervene.
Does the schedule at the high school still allow the students to take their academic classes at our high school and do their trade work at the JVS?
It's growing increasingly more difficult. This year, we are accommodating freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors who want to do partial. And it is almost impossible just to making sure that courses align at the times opposite of their labs out there. And I, my recommendation for the upcoming school year will be that Oberlin students should wait till their sophomore year to experiment with the trades at the JVS, just for this very reason, the difficulty in scheduling. The last slide, which again is a whole meeting in itself, talks about the report card component that's going to come out next year regarding college career workforce and military readiness. It is a focal point for us at the high school. It is one of the driving factors. We have components of credentialing that are tied to their diploma. A few years ago, I talked to the board about competency that we have to pass ELA to, and we have to pass algebra. If we don't, we have to get those students credentialed in some very unique ways, very much tied to this. And so, there is a component of this that's tied to the diploma. But starting next year, we will have a report card grade regarding these students' readiness for life the day after their diploma. And I do want to say that the Each Child on Track data, the cohort that we are part of, has been really eye-opening for me in regards to our students and their readiness for whatever path they choose. Really good data coming out of those meetings.
Well, I just want to say thank you to everyone here and those who had to go. Thank you to your families for staying to give us this information. I have to tell you that I, for one, am very appreciative because although we've done these kind of deep dives before in the past, as you kind of get away from that information and you get questions, you feel less secure in your answers, and you also don't have the updated information. And then, not that you all don't share data, you do, but you share it with people who, you know, do things other than teach, so. It's great to have the numbers, but I don't know what they mean. So, thank you for taking the time to explain all of this and just do a deep, deep dive. I really appreciate it, and I'm sure the community does too. And I'm going to point them to this work session when I get questions. So, I'll answer them, and then I'll tell them, you can find the detail from our staff and our administrators on March 4, 2025, so, thank you.
Yeah, I also just want to say thank you. I feel like this is my favorite board meeting that we've had, even though it's been really long, but there's just so much wonderful information that I've just been curious about or I thought I knew that is different than I knew it, and this is, and I'm so glad to bring my packet home. Yeah, thank you for so much wonderful information.
Okay, so, future meetings, March 18, 2025 is a regular meeting, and tour at 5:30 at the Lorraine County JVS, 1518 State Route 58 in Oberlin. And the next one's April 22, 2025 is a regular meeting, 6:00 PM at the Oberlin Elementary School right here where we are. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Ms. Katzen?
Yes.
Ms. Stagg?
Yes. We're adjourned, thank you again, everyone.